Six P M will cause regular village board meetings to order if you all please join me in a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderstood, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all join me in a moment of silence again. Mr. Clerk, would you take your own?
Trustee Nice.
Present.
Trustee Tribe, here. Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerber. Trustee Fletcher.
He couldn't tell me.
Are there any, let's see, public comments besides that? Jerry and Keller Buck, comments here. I'd like to step up to the microphone, our public comment gives you five minutes worth of time which you can...
Five minutes, okay. As I said, I'm Jerry Buck, this is Keller Buck. We're here due to some issues regarding one of our neighbors and the police department, okay? We've been having ongoing issues with our neighbor. We've had the police out several times regarding noise punching our walls and blaring their stereo. The last time we had them out, we called three times in one night because she called and then it kept up. She called back, said she wanted to talk to an officer. And then as soon as the officers left, they started punching our walls and blaring the stereo again. And this is when she had to be at four o'clock in the morning to be at work. And it was like one o'clock, twelve thirty, one o'clock, somewhere around that area. Now, my big issue is here is I don't like being lied to, okay? I asked the officer, the last time they were out there, if you had some kind of ordinance for noise. He told me no. I called dispatch back, I asked if I could talk to a supervisor. No supervisor apparently wasn't on that night. She told me to call back tomorrow morning. I talked to a sergeant, he told me the same thing. No ordinance for noise, which I have a hard time believing that. Every town's got some sort of ordinance to deal with noise problems. So, I called Nick, I called like Monday or whatever and I talked to the village, not the mayor, but the...
Manager.
Manager, is that you?
Yes.
Okay. He was very nice. He told me that that wasn't true, that there is an ordinance for that, okay? There's a lot of things going on over at this house and I already know it. They have eleven thousand, or eleven hundred dollar water bill, high electricity got shut off, people in and out of there. It's a nice neighborhood and I don't really want with a, not to be rude, but some ghetto people over there doing whatever they're doing. I know what goes on when cars are coming and going and when water bills are that high. It's pretty obvious what's going on. I did call and I did talk to the chief, I don't think the conversation went very well. He told me that his officers would never say that there wasn't an ordinance, so basically calling me a liar. That's not true. My wife was present, I was there, the officer who told me that there was no ordinance was standing there. He was with a female officer, I'm guessing he was her F T O. And there was another officer standing in the driveway. I, I can tolerate a lot of stuff, but having police, someone from the police department lying to me? I know you guys have ordinance. And then I'm being told that I can't, that they can't do anything about it. And if I file a complaint against these neighbors and write a statement and sign off on it, they can be written a ticket. This has been, this has been going on for like six months. We don't even call a quarter of the time because a lot of times it's going on during the day, the music and whatnot. But they're doing it late at night. Everybody has a right to call at your life, everybody. And I don't like being lied to. And I don't like being implied that I am a liar. My wife has lived there for a long time, has never had any problems with anybody before. And I'm sure she's got a few words to say too. I probably rambled on most of the five minutes.
This is actually been going on a lot longer than six months. It's been going on probably within a couple of weeks after they moved in. I complained to my landlord, he hasn't done anything about it. His, his comment is, oh, I'll call and talk to the mom. Well, the mom's ninety percent of the time is never there. The husband was there maybe the first month, never seen him again. There's a girl there that looks like a teenager. I don't know if she's actually a teenager or not, but she's pretty much the only one that's ever there, whether there's a car there or not. And nothing gets done. I've, I've called even before we got married, because we've been married a little over a year. Even before we got married, it was phone calls, phone calls, phone calls. Can, can you come out and take care of this? I got woken up at one fifteen in the morning with her blaring the stereo and waited forty-five minutes for the police to show up. And they were probably outside a good ten, fifteen minutes pounding on the back door and front door to just get her to come to the door to turn the music off. A week later, she does it at six o'clock in the morning and wakes him up after he just got home at three o'clock in the morning. It's a constant and there's, you guys, I'm assuming you don't have ordinance for landlords that if the police have come out after a certain period of time, the landlords should be ticketed for not controlling the people that live in their places. I have to be up early in the morning. I am a bus driver for the school district. Do you know what it's like to function on four hours of sleep and picking kids up while I'm falling asleep because I'm tired and there's nobody to do my job? I have to do my job because we don't have a bus driver for the school district. Or I do a trip on weekend, like the one where she woke us up at four, at four o'clock in the morning, blaring music. There was another time she woke us up at one o'clock in the morning. I'm in a dead sleep, she wakes up me up at one o'clock in the morning. I get up at five to be at the bus lot, so I can pre-trip to pick up the rest of them to sleep by six. Now, my sleep has been broken because I need woken up. But there's been no punishment to them. Nothing has happened other than knocking on the door, turn the music off. She's young, she doesn't care, she doesn't listen. There's been no punishment. I've never had a problem with a neighbor until these people.
Thank you guys, appreciate the comments. Are there any other public comments on the agenda?
There are none. We did our presentation about the Sons of the American Revolution, ladies and gentlemen.
Before I present this though, Robin, I want to make a couple of comments about our first responders in Chad. We are certainly blessed with the quality. And I can say that as a person who's standing here alive because of the first responding E M Ts that came to my house a couple of years ago, right after I started chemo, there was, six days after I started, there was a problem and I couldn't breathe. My wife called nine one one and E M Ts came out and rushed me to the emergency room. I was put in ICU and finally, two and a half months later, I was able to return home. So, I am still alive and standing upright and breathing because of the great work that they did. Here's another example. Recently, while most of us would probably run away from a burning building, he ran into it and pulled the lady out. And for that, the S A R, I tend to give something that balances not very good. Presenting the S A R Life Saving Medal. This is approved by our National President General. So, a lot of these are handed out. Congratulations on what you do. With that, you get a National Society Certificate.
Serial for free.
I failed to mention that this is George Tinkin, he's the president of the Springfield Chapter.
Congratulations, thanks, I appreciate it.
Anyway, thank you for what you do and the rest of the officers also.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Congratulations, Officer Sherry.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, David. So, this, this incident occurred on December eighteenth down on South Main Street. So, yeah, obviously it's been following this, the fact is, also, we shared tickets, you know, we don't see a game and a rush of the lady from the residents as well. So, on behalf of the Chadan Police Department, obviously a certificate of appreciation and also a life-saving award pinned. Obviously, you won those, you went home during, throughout the whole year, so congratulations. Thank you.
This is what you give your speaker.
I'll thank everybody for coming out, I appreciate it. So, there's a few people I gotta thank. Thank God for having me in the right place at the right time, I was glad I served. Thank my wife, who, she's supported me my whole life through a lot of silly things that I ended up doing. So, this will be another one, running the buildings. And thanks to the team at Chadan P D and the powers, thanks for your support. Thank you.
All right, we have no old business item one, number one, and our new business is a resolution regarding IDOT plumber Boulevard, page one. Resolution number one, and motion to bring the support. Trustee Tribe has made a motion of second, seconded by Trustee Fletcher. Jim, you want to give a quick explanation of what these are? I can't have your committee report right now.
Sure. So, Plumber Boulevard, what we're doing is using the rebuild Illinois money that we've talked about, it seems like forever. But finally moving forward with that project. So, IDOT requires us to, a resolution to allocate those funds for these, you know, functional overlay along Plumber Boulevard. So, the set of plans that we have will extend from Tarmigan all the way to pretty much where like Bank of Trust is, or IDOT jurisdiction. We'll jump over Route Four, pick up on the other side of Walgreens entrance, and then continue that all the way through Ravina Drive. So, that will be the first portion of it. Another portion in terms of working through with the village staff in terms of budgeting. We're also looking at allocating about two hundred fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money to extend that even further. So, but for the IDOT portion, and the Hoop said we gotta jump through for that, you know, the main contract will be Tarmigan all the way to Ravina.
Have these plans been submitted to IDOT for you?
Today.
Yes.
Settle, who's sitting right there?
I'm settled.
Do you have any suitable for framing? Retractors?
It's gonna be a big frame, but we're gonna need to pay the pay.
All right, any further discussion? There you go, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tribe.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yeah.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher. Yes!
Item two, is there another IDOT resolution related to the same project? This is just after you move the money, you say you might extend the money.
So, the timing on that though is the second one doesn't really require board action at this time. They need actually formal contracts as bid for the second document. The first one's just the resolution, the second one's the expenditures. So, once we have a contract in place and bid documents, then we'll process that through. We can get your approval tonight, just sets it up, but IDOT's not gonna review it until we have construction engineering, the bid documents and contractor bids for that project to, you know, quantify the expenditures.
And that's a month, then a half to two months out?
That's when we give our review and approval for IDOT to forward a bid.
Do you need this tonight?
I do not need the second one tonight.
The motion will table this until we see what the contract is. Trustee Nice made a motion to table today, seconded by Trustee Charo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three is a resolution approving purchase of Rock Salt from the state of Illinois, a motion to bring this to the board.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo made a motion, seconded by Trustee Fletcher. Another change in M F T programming rules for IDOT requires us to either vote every time that we're going to purchase Rock Salt or issue the authorization to have the manager be approved to make those purchases. This resolution sets that up so that the manager has that authorization. Any further discussion?
For Trustee Pat with Rock Salt.
Just on this, on this one item, we're gonna let him go. Actually, Barry will tell him what you need to do.
I, I think you may let, I think that falls within the scope.
Mr. Clerk, which?
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher. Yes! Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tribe.
Yes.
No motion to bring the consent agenda to the floor. Trustee Ferguson made a motion, seconded by Trustee Fletcher. Any discussion regarding the warrants and the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tribe.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Jim, do you have any other public comments on village business?
I do.
On village business?
Oh, on village business? What other businesses are there?
For the committee? Jim will speak later. Do you have no other public, no other public comments on village business? Next scheduled meeting, six P M on March twenty-sixth, no need for a closed session this evening. I'll entertain motion to adjourn. Trustee Charo has made a motion, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Ferguson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Being stands to turn, Trustee Charo, cheer.
It's like at six fifteen, I'm gonna call the committee to hold to order if the court is ready.
Yes, okay. Trustee Nice.
I'm present.
Trustee Tribe, here. Trustee Ferguson. Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Fletcher, here. It was President McKenzie, present.
Any public comments on the agenda topics? Hearing none. Take the motion to bring the consent agenda to the...
I'll make it.
Then we're thirteen, I know.
Tribe.
Trustee Tribe has made the, did you, which one you talked? Trustee Tribe made the motion, you have a second.
I'm sergeant.
Trustee Tribe.
Nice.
Would you like me to speak for you?
It might be really good, I can't, I'm just gonna do better. We're gonna move along.
Ask Earl.
Okay, can I have...
Earl. All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Do you have a C M T engine, do you have anything?
Yes, now's the time.
Oh, it is, okay. I had one earlier, but it... Yes, just small things on a couple of projects here. Next week, we'll be, we will be receiving bids for use of park grant money to replace part of the bike trail. That will be the section right when we come into South Park, or by the tennis courts, replacing the section just to the south of where we overlaid that project last year. So, that will be done by April thirtieth for the contract documents. In terms of M F T projects this year, you know, the biggest projects out of M F T is going to be regrading, repaving the Savannah Walnut intersection. That's on our list. We will be doing it on the chip program and coordinating that through Dustin Berry on that. Some ground improvements that will need a bid out over on Walnut, just east of Gordon Drive. And then this year yet, we're going to be doing under the current years program, patching program again, similar to what we did on Plumber Boulevard, running extended patching closer to the high school and try to take that all the way out to Gordon Drive to get that prepped for future overlays. The other one that we're doing, obviously, we just talked about Plumber Boulevard and we talked about the limits on that and hope to extend that using ARPA money, additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars to extend that project even further to use from Ravina. We are going to start surveying here pretty quick on Keystone and Savannah. We're gonna do some lidar scanning on that to get very accurate pavement grades. One that improved pavement at Savannah, similar to what we did over at Gordon and Walnut, smooth that out. And then the other one on Keystone, we're gonna scan that for the purpose of controlling material usage on that. That's gonna be the one that we're using experimental pavement fibers in it. So, the fiber modified asphalt. So, we're gonna do some crown correction, we're gonna edge line two inches down. And then at the center, you're gonna be anywhere from three inches to four inches thick in the center. And we're gonna use that as a kind of go-by for addressing some of these low-volume residential overlays so we can get some more paint for our block down, our project.
So, we haven't sorted that yet, right?
You haven't started it?
Yeah.
No, we're gonna survey it here in the next month.
We're fixing to.
We're fixing to, these are upcoming problems, yes. Fixing to fix it. And then the only other thing that we have is pulling together documents for the R F Q that we talked about last month in terms of securing architectural planning services for budgetary purposes for Town Square Developments.
That kind of was responsible for the lights under the, perhaps on...
The villages.
Well, I know that, but I don't know exactly who coordinated that, but that's awesome.
Dustin.
That's amazing. We see the pain now, but the lights are great.
That's an item that we're looking to do in this year's plan.
It's a bit awesome, tight and comfortable.
We had this conversation.
I was thinking of, like, all of you guys, just head and carry your chair up there.
No.
And then we'll have a mounting chair to see if this will be first. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we're all safe. I think it's...
The cool thing is, all the kids that would do it, in my corner, I could probably get them to do me first.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, I hate doing one of them.
We're being honest. We're being honest before we go. I guess that it's...
This has gone off the rails before. We were talking about murals and stuff. Anything else, anything further?
It's all I got.
Just back from rounds.
Junior, I'm sorry.
Fox Creek.
Village manager.
Village manager. Planning Commission met a couple of weeks ago and they reviewed the preliminary plan, location sketch for Fox Creek Plat Ten. Fox Creek Plat Nine is the south side of Plumber Boulevard, at the very, very end, out of Fox Creek. Plat Ten is the north side of, so, and, and the dividing line is the creek that cuts through there. So, as you can see, it's essentially three streets. One of them is a continuation, the other two are small cul-de-sacs. That would finish out the last of the plats that R P Lumber, R P L, R L P developed and owns. So, they would like to start on this sometime this summer. So, Planning Commission was completely fine with it. Jim, he reviewed it, marked it up, we sent it back to him, they sent us an updated roll, it's all ready to go. So, if you guys give the approval on this, then they can start pulling construction drawings together. Our contractor will go out there and start putting the streets in and it's off.
Can I have one, one question? And this is, this is, I'm not gonna take up a lot of time, but there's one way in and one way out.
On this, yes.
And how many homes is, is in that?
I think it's thirty-nine.
So, is there, is there some kind of limit on how many you can have, I mean, homes or whatever? Because I think the other thing is we're doing a lot of one way in, one way out, and that's where interior of the road too. So, I just was curious, there's a lot of houses.
In this, in this case, here's where they would come in, okay?
Yeah.
But we have this going all the way to the end, that if property owners or somebody develops this way, they'll be required to connect that, their road system to there.
But still though, right now, those...
So, you get, you get there eventually, to what, to what you're talking about, where you can get in and out in multiple directions. You get there eventually, but as you plat in and build section by section, because this one is oddly configured with that creek that's running through there, where they have a drainage way that runs back to the east, you can't extend that road all the way through because it's the drainage, so...
You're in a building of bridge and that makes it...
Oh, yeah.
So, eventually you get there. So, as you piece together a larger subdivision with the next one, you stub out where they've got it in time.
This lot here is the only one that will have a driveway out of Tarmigan. Everything else will have internal facing driveways.
Yeah, I just always thought it was interesting how sometimes they build these huge subdivisions, they have one way in, one way out from this side.
So, ultimately, that will connect to North-South Road, extend it down.
So, in a, in some time, we'll get it run from Mansion Road all the way down to Coward Road on the other side. It's gotta start at both ends, but there's farmland in between that we gotta wait for somebody to develop to build it.
Well, thank you for answering that question. I have a quite simple question, but it's always amazing.
Is there anyone in particular that is going to be building that or different people in general?
The, the developers will pay for the infrastructure to go in and then they'll put the lots up for sale. Now, they indicated to us that they thought they had somebody that would buy all the lots, once all the roads and all the infrastructure's built. But they never told me who that was.
Any further?
That's it on that. We're still working on the budget. Every week, we're making good progress. Our plan is to have the budget voted on before our fiscal year comes to an end in the last meeting in April. So, we're hoping that we at least have a budget passed by then, which will be the first time in a long, long time. But we don't have any union contracts, but we have to wait or negotiating or anything like that this time. So, we got a good jump on it and things are progressing well. David, do you want me to report that we met with Nikki Wazinski's office on FEMA stuff a little bit, or you wanna talk about it?
I would like to go about that. We're just, well, we're still working through, we're working through all of the paperwork that it requires to get through FEMA's proposal and then their first and second and third review and then congressional review. So, we were fortunate enough to meet with local staff from Congressman Wazinski's office to talk through where we think there may be challenges and we'll have assistance from them. And they've been very gracious in helping us and guiding us all the way through that process. So, we have, it's, it's in three packets, groups, submissions that we put our stuff into. All three of those have been submitted, so they're going through that review process. It just takes a...
I bet it is.
It's a lot of documentation, it's a lot of discussion, and it's a lot of work. Megan especially has spent a lot of work on doing this, and they've got a lot of patience, because we think...
She's very, very good at it and she has way more patience than I have.
Which is why Megan's doing it instead of you.
That makes sense.
Are they giving you any indications? I mean, is this supposed to...
It's, it's a long...
I bet it's three-year process.
It's a longer than you process, so they've not put into any, not around, they're not finalized a review on any of those three groups yet. And then they've not, obviously not told us when to expect anything. We're not the only ones, every community that went through this storm that's dealing with them has had the same plan, arduous task and long process to go through. We do have nice and poor out of Washington, gaining attention for what's going on.
So, we will offer to you guys, if you wanna come in, sit down, go over the budget, hear what we're gonna discuss, be able to ask questions in detail. We can't have more than two trustees, or a trustee and a mirror at the same time. But we'll, once we get to that point where we think we've got everything where we want it to be, we'll come and show it to you and see if there's anything to this one tweet.
All right, is that...
That's it.
Okay. Public properties?
Oh, you know, yesterday, last night, we had the members, a couple of members from the Pickleball Society.
Lands of Shag.
Lands of Shag, Pickleball.
We should, we should all know that, huh?
Not yet, we have two minutes, but some of it is, of course, but, yeah, but they're talking about, we have some fundraising. Dustin, I'm still isn't there, but he did provide an update to, to the folks in... What we talked about, actually, two weeks ago, which was good, I kind of talked about it as well. We did talk about some of the improvements, some of the fencing that we talked about, so they were surprised that... They do have stamps on our other bank account. So, I think that they're gonna start, they're looking for about eighty thousand dollars to give it away.
And having a quick discussion with Roland one day, he said that he'd like to get the connection of who, who's in charge of the Pickleball so that maybe friends at the park can work with friends at the Pickleball. And we'll get friends talking.
Friends.
I've been in communication with Lisa about how to sell some of this...
I've been communicating with Lisa about how it sells while it's for shows. I think you're still on the signals, aren't you?
I am, yeah.
So it's. There's a word out there now, more towards for, for, at the time, so. They also asked me to talk about a credit all been, something on barriers, trees versus the edging, bedding, last lot of years. So again, a lot of good conversations about it, but I mean, I'm seeing a lot of, a lot of people doing, a lot of people doing that in each one. But I'm in Houston, I saw she talks about Chicago, so I'm playing in Houston. Like playing now, it's 190 degrees coming up in about three months. So good stuff there. We'll give that dog park there, and some rip rat by the, kind of some rip rat by the diseased there, the shelter there. But trees are in a good shape with winter, so you forget about that, and some grass is coming in the wall, who's he's had right there. Bike path fixes. Most of both Amarin, did Amarin do something or? So. CWP, yeah, CWP via driving on the bike path tore up the bike path area here just north of Walnut for the first stretch. Coordinated with Dustin on that for repairs. What worked out really nice is we had previous bid documents on what we were doing for repairs of the bike path. So we were able to give those, you know, our standard bid package and everything else, and they were able to replicate that and replace that. So there's a good trench of bike path right here north of Walnut that's all done in concrete five inches thick. You know, tapered out on the side, see good mulch, so back to what we're looking for standard.
See, see the good pit pit holes repaired.
Basically, the worker was located on so.
Yeah, it's, they did a world impression. And when you drive along there now or go down the bike path, you'll notice all those giant poles are gone. And it just makes it look different. I don't know why, there was a whole lot of all those poles, but with those poles down, it looks.
It's different, right?
Really different. Well, they're hanging over the path and everything, so.
And then actually we talked about, there are a few scouts that are here projects. There are CBSI, there's three baseball fields, but one, two, and three are getting new bat holders, baseball bat holders. So those are coming up by, I suppose, soon actually, I'll meet with a kid, one of the scouts is in, forty-five minutes on that one. And then we have a, we're going to put, we're with Dustin, we're going to put up two park benches at the Brothers of the Revolution Garden, Flower Garden. Because it was knocked down this part during the storm, we're going to put two of them. So Dustin and Nick Smith are working on that together. We were going to meet this, we were going to meet tonight, actually, but I can actually, Dustin. And then we're also going to put up a, a, he calls it a best time bell for cross-country all the time. What it is, it's a, think of a, it's a four-by-four post. And then there's another four-by-four piece that has a doll going through it that then goes through the post that's in the ground. It's like eight feet, six feet tall. But you can take the top off if that's where the doll is, and it slides right through to the other post. And then there's an armchair off it, and it's going to be a brass or iron bell that is detachable. So you can pick up the whole thing, put it into a car, and so the only thing left overnight is this four-by-four, six-foot, eight-foot post, whatever it is. It's, yeah, concrete, concrete, you can dig that, right? So yeah, so that'll be there, cross-country that uses it all the time. Frank Bransky is sponsoring it from a coaching perspective. He'll hold on to it, Frank does a lot with the runners in general, with cross-country and track. And that project will be one of the solid parts as well.
So when they pass that, they rig the bell or?
When they finish and the time is new, the best time, you got the best time, you go rig it up. It's awesome. It's cool stuff, so that's my. That's it.
Thank you. Any public comments on village business? Hearing none. The next scheduled meeting for the committee of the whole is April 9th. We have the reason for a closed session, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Nice has made a motion. Trustee Fletcher has seconded a motion, all in favor.